Bus drivers or volunteer firemen or they, you know, like somebody who works on the farm, you know, it's, it's a long-term position that provides a little bit, it's a different person looking for it, but they have to do the training.
Yeah.
And I don't know what he required for training for his officer, do you have to have a degree? Or so is that a junior college training?
That's a, that's a two-year certification certified by post-graduates. It's two years, but you have to see follow-up, just like resume. That there's nobody out there that's going to take the pressure.
But, but you know, I was being a part-time employee before I went to the city.
We didn't sit last month.
Oh, yeah.
Before we paid our full-time officers.
I don't know what we paid in Toledo, but we, we did our own classes in Toledo. We got accepted to be a fireman or a police officer and remember it was a new training.
Oh, well, yeah, a fireman.
Yeah.
They're sorry.
Yeah. Sure, oh sure. Well, see, our firemen were all full-time. They worked twenty-five hours on or forty-eight hours on, but they had to go live there.
Yeah.
But I was wondering if that would become, if we could rig it somehow, not tomorrow, but in the future where it would be a part, a permanent part of your job. For somebody who might work seasonally or who, well, like a farmer. Huh?
Yeah, but they gotta be post-직, they have to be post-직.
Yeah.
Well, it takes a lot of, you know, it's gonna take a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not gonna be far.
We'll call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of the Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which they are one nation, under God, in the bill of liberty and justice.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll now move on to the Foley wastewater regionalization project. Now, everyone should have their information.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm gonna start. And then our wastewater engineer, Jared Bogey, is here too, and then he'll take over with the rest of the items on the agenda. So first, I'm gonna just overview the bid results. Obviously, these were sent out to you earlier. We received two bids with the wastewater project. One came in about twenty-two point seven million, that includes the addendum. The other one was sixteen point five million. So those have been reviewed, and the engineer is here today to recommend or to present to you the possibility of awarding this bid. What I wanna overview with you tonight is just what we are looking at roughly with the numbers. This is gonna change. We are dealing with changing interest rates. We're still working on, you know, what the contingencies are going to be. There's, there's numbers that can change within this, but these are the best guesses that we have or estimates at this point. It does really help that we have a bid in hand for estimating those construction costs. So here, construction costs, what I have in here is about eighteen point five million. You're seeing numbers that are a little bit bigger on some of the documents. That's because some of those numbers are before we take off some of our grant funding, and there's also some additional contingency that's built in. But roughly, we're looking at eighteen point five million. And then the additional connection fee, which you had seen this a number of months ago, this is the cost for us to hook on or buy into the Saint Cloud system. The estimate we are working with is six point three million. That does need to be updated. I, I don't anticipate significant changes, but it will change slightly, and we will get that to you as soon as we have it. And this is really gonna depend to, on the actual point or date of connection. This is a long project, a long construction cycle, you know, so we, when we connect, we'll determine when we pay that. So total cost of the project with the connection fee and construction, around twenty-five million. Good news is, we did well when it came to funding. We have a direct appropriation of eight million. That was the direct bonding money, is that comes off the top of the total price. And then we have the P-Sig grant. That caps at seven million or eighty percent of construction costs. That timing, we are at the top of the list, but just below the fundable range. I think we're like maybe two or three below the fundable range, last I checked. So that money, we anticipate money will come in this year with the legislature to fund us, but we're still not certain on when that will happen. One of the other items we are working on or following closely is they are looking at a bill to increase the cap on P-Sig. If that were to be passed, what PFA has told me, since we're not funded yet, we may be eligible for more money if that does come, you know, and pass through the state. I don't know what the likelihood of that is, we'll see how the session plays out. So total to finance, around ten million. Right now, last loan estimate was about two percent, a hair over two percent. I will tell you, they go up every time I request them. So that is something we're gonna have to deal with, just with the pressure on the interest rates. So just looking at a cash flow perspective, we had to calculate what we think roughly will be charged from Saint Cloud, what we have to pay in debt and other operating costs. We estimate about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand per year to Saint Cloud. That assumes we will send a flow of about three hundred thousand gallons per day. That's our best guess, could go up or down. You know, that's, that's what we're kinda running with with the facility plan or what we see. Annual debt service, based on those numbers, around six hundred thousand. Like I said, this is gonna fluctuate a bit. Operating costs, pumping chemicals, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand. We still have to take a look at that through our budget cycle on how much staff time this is gonna take, how much are we allocating to this fund? Those are some of the items that we still need to work through at the staff level. And then the capital fund, and this is an item we always currently budget to fund depreciation. That's gonna have to adjust over time, but that gets us just a yearly cash flow of about one point two million a year to fund this.
So what are our operating costs now?
I think with depreciation and our committed bond, it's about five hundred thousand.
No, back up one. Please. Not that far. There you go.
Yeah.
So our operating costs are a hundred and twenty thousand, pumping chemicals and staff. What are our costs now to maintain our lagoons?
Oh, the lagoon cost, that'd be more.
I'd have to pull that.
Yeah.
Ballpark? Twenty thousand, fifty thousand?
Up close to the hun, I mean.
So there's not much difference then?
Fifty, you know Jared from one year? I without, I wouldn't even wanna.
Yeah, and so.
Whatever my salary goes to sewer at least, if not more, so she's taking any of that out of there.
And that's, like I said, a discussion we have to have, because this is a different type of, you know, we don't do DMR, if you don't do some of the things, but we aren't, we don't have maybe a solid handle on how much time it's gonna take to chemical and monitor this, we're still gonna have to work through that item. So I guess that this, this could fluctuate a bit. We also could, you know, pumping costs could be a little less. With the equalization, we might have some ability to control that flow, hold more, pump at a more consistent rate, maybe at certain times. We're gonna look at leveraging all that as much as possible.
Well, so do you foresee having to hire another person on?
No, I don't think that's at all, we think it's less staff time. And then just, this is just to show you what we've been looking at with just sewer revenues. We had about a ten percent increase from twenty to twenty-one, but we had a decrease in usage at about three hun, three point five percent. Sewer is based off of the water usage. We do have some high users that have had some change over the year. We did do a substantial rate increase as we, we passed earlier, and that estimated sewer revenues, and it's conservative, about nine hundred thousand. So that's what we're bringing in right now. With our cash flow, we're short about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we know we do need to do another rate increase. Other considerations we have to look at, you know, growth will, will generate some additional cost if we're running infrastructure, if we have infrastructure in place, that could be different, and we may be able to obtain some sack and trunk. We have some deferred assessments and some costs that we put in, or we put forward to put infrastructure in the ground that developers or people will pay back if they develop. So there could be some trunk and infrastructure costs, but just generally speaking, we're looking at what we know as the consistent revenue, which is that sewer charge. And building into the future, we'll have to look at what those high-strength users are sending us and how we charge them. And that's a discussion that we will have moving forward. And then I just wanted to, just to show you where we're at in sewer and cash investment balances, we're about two point five million. Just with the design process, we spent three-quarters of a million. We did the facility plan, the anti-degradation process prior to that. So we've been spending money out of the sewer fund, which we anticipated we would do. But that's a number we're gonna have to keep a real close eye on. Obviously, we have other needs in the city, other infrastructure that needs to happen, other projects. We have to make sure we're maintaining a healthy fund balance as well, so that we can, you know, plan for and pay for those projects moving forward. Any questions on this? Like I said, this, we will try to pinpoint this down better for you as we move forward, but I want you to at least understand again what we're looking at, how the numbers are starting to look moving forward, and, and the fact that we will need to raise rates, which we've talked about a number of times at this level, but, you know, the bids were great, the, you know, the bid percentage night is good, but this is the, you know, reality of how, what everything costs and how it looks on the end. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jared if you don't have questions.
Any questions? Okay.
Ah, I will do one more item, sorry. The easements, so you had a number of documents. Those were all of the necessary easements that we obtained. I think I gave you estimates on the cost for those. The final number, I think, worked out with all of them is about twenty-three thousand total. Those documents are in your packet. We do need to move approval of those items to authorize the mayor to sign, and then we'll obtain the rest of those signatures. A couple of them have been signed, but we're still waiting on a few more people to come in and make the, you know, to execute that final document. So I will need approval on that if the council chooses.
Want it now?
I'll make a motion that we accept the costs on the easements. Or that we, that we purchase the easements at the estimated cost that we have available here.
Say it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Hey, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Two resolutions in your packets this evening. The first one is related to the funding associated with the project or the PFA loan. That is a resolution that's required by PFA to apply for the, the funding associated with the project. Pretty straightforward resolution there, but looking for a motion to adopt that resolution, and I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
I'll make that motion. Approve Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash eleven.
I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second item in your packet this evening is a summary of the bids received. You did just see that earlier. Ultimately, the low bid was submitted by Geislinger. They're from Watkins, Minnesota. I did have the opportunity to talk to them after the bid opening on the thirtieth, and they're looking forward to getting started on the project. Pending council action here with awarding the project, we'll schedule a pre-construction meeting. At that point, they'll provide us with an idea of schedule, where they're gonna start in terms of the length of the route, whether that be on one end or the other, perhaps in the middle. But certainly, we'll, we'll coordinate all that with them. So the recommendation this evening, and as a Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash twelve has been set up, is to award the regionalization project to Geislinger and Sons of Watkins in the amount of sixteen million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and fifty-one cents. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So on our list, it says alternate one, what does that mean?
Yeah, so the alternate number one, ultimately what that is, is it's related to a couple of the road crossings. They, the project was set up so that they would be directionally drilled with a casing and a pipe inside the casing at the same time to reduce costs associated with the project. As we were in the bidding process, a couple of the directional drilling contractors did contact us, and they were concerned about the density of the soils, actually. They were concerned that their reamers couldn't get through there. So rather than issuing a change order during the project, if they could not make it through with their reamers, that was set up to be a jack and auger, which ultimately, they auger a hole and jack a steel casing through, rather than the, the HDPE or PVC pipes as part of the drilling process. So that's what the alternate is, and based on the input of those, of those contractors and their concerns with the drilling, that is being recommended as well.
So is that part of the fifteen point nine?
It is part of the sixteen point five.
That's included, alright.
Anybody else have any questions for him?
These were the only two bids that we received.
That's correct, we received two bids for the project.
Any questions?
Make a motion to accept the low bid, Geislinger and Sons.
I'll second that.
Okay, that would be Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash twelve. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you, Jared. We will now have open forum. If there is anyone here who has a problem or a concern with the city, we ask that they please come up to the podium, state their name and address, and let us know what their concern is. Okay, we'll move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council, you received my stat report for the month of March. We had three hundred and fifty-three calls. There's a few things to point out, traffic enforcement was up, along with miscellaneous was up because we had over twenty-one assist person or motorist at calls. So that means like if somebody calls and needed assistance with just the basics, they had questions in regards to something or the various things we get called for, that falls into that category. That's for down, as also was assault and domestics. The only thing I, else I have is our bicycle safety rodeo is going to be June eighteenth. I have been working on that. And a new event we have this year is July seventh. It is a roof beer float social here at City Hall. That is a new event that, that we are going to be having here. That is all I have, unless you have something for me.
Does anyone have any questions for her?
Well, I have a question, I'm not sure, it has to do with the monthly report, but and maybe you wanna wait till the Highway twenty-three project. I, I live on Cottage Grove Avenue, and I know that there is a detour route through the summer that is gonna be on.
It's gonna go on Broadway, yeah.
They'll go on Broadway and they'll go up to twenty-three. I'm, traffic on that street is terrible. I mean, people, it's only two blocks, I don't know how they can get up to the speeds they do between Broadway and the intersection there. And I'm concerned that that's gonna be an additional amount of traffic on that street through the summer. And we do have a lot of children, not just on Cottage Grove, but behind us, we've got, I forget they count the kids, it's like thirty kids running around there, and I, I'm wondering if there can be something done over the summer.
We can pull up extra patrol for there, but with the, I mean, as long as they're buying all of the other traffic laws, there's not gonna be more of that, that law enforcement we could do.
Any other questions for her, for Katie? We will now move on to City Engineer, Jared Griffith, with the update on the Benton County fiber project. And I see we have two commissioners and the administrator from Benton County here, too. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of the City Council. As you stated, there are a few county reps here in the audience tonight. They will have a couple of words to say after this, but just a quick update, just so you know that we are making progress on the Benton County fiber project. Now that the forest main project has been awarded to Geislinger, our next step is to coordinate with, with them, Bolton, Menk and the City, their construction schedule, 'cause we do have from the County Road one to roughly the alignment, the old County Road fifty alignment, will be in the same corridor, that north ditch, back slope kind of region of, of that Chunky twenty-three ditch. That is really all I have for the update, and I know the, the council, or not council, the county reps would like to say a few words.
Mayor, Members of the Council, thanks for your time. We've been working pretty heavily on this fiber project, as you guys have been working on your, your forest main and everything, and congratulations on it coming in as, as good as it did. So with that, we've been working with SEH and Jared over there on, on, you know, implementation, basically getting it out for bid. We're very close, I mean, probably within three weeks to a month, we could have it out to bid. But in lieu of your guys' project moving forward, we really gotta work with the City of Foley, Mark, Pat and Foose, and, and figure out where, who's gonna go first and everything. Is, this isn't a race, a race to the ground here. It doesn't pay for us to get the fiber cut up and get in your guys' way. So we really wanna show that, you know, hey, we're, let's be in partnership and, and do it the right way. If we have to hold off a, a while, then we gotta do that. So if, we mainly just came to just let you know, we're not racing to the dirt to beat you guys. Let's work together and get them both in without, without causing anybody any hardship.
Are you following the same path as us?
Uh, for part of the way.
Okay.
Yep. Mainly to, from Saint Cloud to Brandy Cabinets. So after that, we're gonna be in our own, in twenty-three in the.
Pretty much down Highway twenty-three, right?
Yep, exactly. So, but it doesn't pay for us to get part of it done and then sit there for a while. So we're, we're gonna be working heavily on the schedule with you guys, trying to figure out, you know, who, who and where is going, going first, and make sure we're not kinda jumping on each other. That's all I have, Mr. Johnson, you got anything?
Couple things all I have, good. First of all, Mayor and Council, thank you. I wanna say thank you to Mark, I know that he's been in contact with Chris Byrd, the county, and we're really trying to encourage those two to get together and do their jobs. They know much more about this than we do, and so we really wanna encourage that relationship. I know, I know they've talked multiple times, so we really wanna promote that.
No.
And as Commissioner Kapinski said, we really, it's not a race to the ground. I mean, for us to get this fiber in, it's not going to be used this fall yet, right? I mean, we've got a lot more build-out to do, so it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to race and get it in before you guys. We wanna work together and make sure that it's done right, and we don't want our fiber cut, and we don't wanna be in your way. So that's our intent, and we wanted to publicly say that, too. Appreciate your commitment to us, too, and working together. It's been a good ride the last year.
Year.
So, thank you, and also congratulations. Pretty awesome coming in, five million back. Good for you guys, so it's great, we're looking forward to see your project through.
Appreciate the concern.
Any questions?
For the record, I see a spirit of cooperation, and that's all that we asked. And it's good.
And that was our intent?
Yep.
We intend to follow through it.
So do we.
We will help you in any way we can, and we know you'll help us, so we appreciate everything you guys do, too.
Absolutely. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that is all I have, this, until the later.
Does anybody have any questions for Jared? Move on to Public Works and Fire, Mark Patton Foose.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Council, good evening. Just a few things on mine. Our new VAC truck, we did take delivery of two weeks ago, week, last week, I guess it was, last Tuesday. We did a day of training on it, so we got the basics down. It's, it's different than what we have, but appears to be a very nice truck. I think what we were sold, we think so far. So yeah, that's, we traded in the old one, and so that's good there. Couple of things we need to do is, we took delivery of our pickup from last year, finally came this past month, one of our one-ton pickups. That's in the bills list, but we need to get rid of the old pickup sometime this summer. Can we be authorized to sell unit zero-six-zero-one, two thousand and six, one ton? I think what we're talking to Sarah, we're going to probably just do sealed bids, and it won't be for a month or so, 'cause we wanna get the plow on the new one and get it all set up. It might be next month, it might be the month after. I mean, we're, but can we be authorized to go ahead and do that, and then we still bring the number back to this council?
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
I make a motion that we authorize the sale of the two thousand and six, one-ton Chevy pickup?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I would rather have it go to auction, because my seventeen truck is worth more now than when I paid for it. A sealed bid is, is gonna be.
You do have the right to reject them if we don't, we can set a minimum, that's an option for us, too. I'll let you comment on that.
I'm open to where it goes, to be honest, I'm not, it's just, we have to do competitive bidding to get rid of it. You know, we can't just say, hey, whoever wants to give us ten thousand, that's there. And if you guys prefer auction, we could look at.
You can set a bottom line.
We didn't have luck, we didn't have luck on the VAC truck, granted, that's a specialty truck.
Yeah. I'm not in a market for a VAC truck, but I'd be in a market for a one-ton pickup, and I'm sure every contractor in the world's looking for the same thing.
We could, um, probably IRE or, I don't know, Tony uses a different vendor.
Going down to Zimmerman. I, that's just my opinion, you guys.
Can we just authorize a sale, and then we'll look at the options and have discussions with Councilmember Bosh and.
Yeah, I, I could see.
It's gotta come back to you anyhow, unless it goes to auction, then we have to accept it when it's gone there.
Yeah, I see, I could see going for sealed bid first and put a.
Minimum on it, sure.
Minimum on it, and then if it doesn't meet that minimum, then we'll put it at auction or something, but I'd like to authorize Mark to work on that now, give him the permission.
Yeah, we'll keep in contact with you on what we decide and how we proceed. Councilmember Bosh will.
Oh, I mean, if you're gonna do it, if you do a sealed bid with a minimum, I'm, I'm fine with that.
We'll let you know.
You just said sealed bid to begin with, you didn't say nothing about a minimum. That's why I questioned why.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, yeah.
You're gonna give away for five grand and it's worth fifteen, or whatever, I'm just exaggerating, of course, but.
Right.
I'm probably not far off.
That's a good point. Yeah, worth a lot.
We're just authorizing the sale of it. That's what my motion was.
Yep.
We need a final vote.
Uh, the motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
On the next, uh, Silver Utility Management Services, it's, um, we have a GIS system through SEH now, which is our mapping. The utility management is more of the day-to-day operations of your system. Um. It's basically operated on iPads. You can GPS all your curb boxes, manholes, uh, street signs. We can even add when you flush a hydrant. The guys can do it all on there now. Right now, they're doing everything on paper, writing everything down. We replaced eighteen stop signs this month. We, you know, you document all that. It's all like, basically we're going electronic, getting out of the paper world. Maintenance, like I say, it's street, water, sewer, whatever you want to put on it. You can, fire could actually get in on the maintenance side, but we're also looking at a different program out there, so we're not sure which way we're going to go. But, uh. Like to purchase this, like I say, the cost is. You have it in your packet there. The setup is, it's two thousand dollars and then, uh, it's thirty-one hundred for the ta- first tablet. And the setup of the, the program is in there. So that's why the tablet costs more. And then there's obviously, you'll see the year, that's what I asked what the yearly costs are. And for the two of them. It's going to be twenty-seven hundred. You know, you have eighty-two hundred dollars, page number two of that council packet. Um, this is the one that Sock Rapids uses. They're very happy, very aggressive with it. Um. They have a gal in, uh, Ashley in the office there, Ashley runs theirs in the public works. And Craig is very happy. Sartell uses it. NOD is quite aggressive. Forest didn't even has this program, just a minor version of it. So, many towns have it. Malacca has it. Talked to Gary over there. They have a smaller version of a different company. But we've looked at others and we felt this is the best one to go with. This will be divided equally among the three water, sewer, street departments, being it would be a benefit to all the departments in mapping, everything.
Could I get a motion to approve it?
Well. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Hopefully last thing, snowplow for the new one-ton, uh, twenty-two oh-one truck. Um, this is a state bid, same file we have on the other two one-ton, so they're interchangeable. Christ still has the state bid. That's where we bought the last several of them. Hopefully the sale of the, my plan is the sale of the old truck will cover this expense.
So are we keeping the plow, is there a plow on the one you're wanting to sell?
We have an older plow that'll be put on there. We had one that we, the guys rebuilt in the.
On where?
In the, we have, we replaced one a few years back.
So, oh, so you're putting, but you're putting a plow on the one you're selling?
The old plow, yeah, we have one.
And then where's the new plow going, or the one that's on it?
That'll, he has the, the backup instead of the old one that's gone.
Okay.
Yep. We do have a spare now from that insurance claim. Uh, the truck had a claim, the plow did not have a claim, I need to clarify.
Could I get a motion to approve the purchase of the snowplow?
I move to purchase the snowplow. Give a question here.
We have a motion made. Any second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I think unless you guys have something else for me on either end, I am good.
So I just want to. This one you're wanting to get rid of, this old six, is going to be a one-ton with a plow on it?
Yes.
Okay. Because when we said it to begin with, you said you're getting rid of the truck. You didn't say anything about a plow being on it.
Yeah, it's in the packet, it's with the plow.
Yeah, it's right on there. Okay.
We'll now move to administration with Sarah Brun.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, first item I have is ordinance four sixty-five, sewer use regulations connections. Uh, this one I brought back to you, I had mentioned this a couple of months ago regarding, um. Making sure we are getting connections when we have services closer, um, accessible to a person that's currently or a property that's currently unserved. So, the language ordinance that I have in there, really, um, biggest change is, um, from a hundred and fifty feet from the sewer generating structure to the hundred and fifty feet from the property line. Reason being is we don't want, um, somebody to have services right and running in front of their property, but then they set back their house a hundred and seventy-five feet to stay away from connection. So that's one of the major changes with that. We also wanted to incorporate a hardship or unusual circumstance. Um, clause within our ordinance. And that really is, oh, for example, maybe something needs to be bored under a highway, or there's. Extremely rocky, difficult conditions that make it difficult to run a service line through. Um, we wanted to allow for that, uh, possibility for consideration from exemption if it does not seem feasible or, you know, reasonable, um, to connect. So this ordinance allows for the city administrative public works to, um, inform the property owner if there's an exemption and why. And then there'd be an appeal opportunity for that person. So they could come to the city council if they, they don't agree, or if there's a concern regarding with the decision. That, this was all vetted through our legal, um, on what they thought was the best practices, what, um, would ensure that we get. People connected when they're within a reasonable amount of distance from our, our system, but also recognizing there can be some unusual circumstances. Um, so, in front of you tonight, um, there would be another second piece that would update the zoning language as well, because that just basically pulls from this code into the zoning. But that requires a public hearing. Um, this was just posted as what is required, um, on the website prior. And so if we, if we do pass or adopt this tonight, we'll move forward then with the public hearing on the zoning side. Any questions? Um, we're just really trying to make sure that, um, with the investment we're making, we're, we're also, we're, with our funding and, and making these investments in our system and. And providing these extensions of services, we really need to get people connected. Um, we don't want people also putting in private septic systems when there's a sewer close by. You know, so when people replace, we want to make sure they're connecting at that time and so forth.
So I have a question. Where did you come up with, I, I approved of the change, the hundred and fifty feet from the property line there. Where'd you come up with a hundred and fifty feet?
So a lot of the samples I polled were just reasonable distance. Um, we had a hundred and fifty feet in there. That was a number that was determined many years ago to be, you know, a reasonable distance. Um, you know, we talked about it at the staff level, um. You know, it's, it's a little ways away, but it's not, you know, we're, we're trying to find a, a balance, because we also don't want somebody to be. You know, fifty feet away from the line, and it might be an easy way to get them connected, but you know. It's really up to you. A lot of ordinances leave it open and, you know, reasonable. Some people consider reasonable right up in front of them. It's really up to your, your discretion. Um, that's just a number that has been in the code for many, many years.
I think a hundred and fifty is not enough. I mean, I'd say two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet, but is that way too expensive?
You know, I can't really comment on costs per se, but, um, you know, that, and especially with everything going on now in this, this environment. Um, it, it's really up to, to how aggressive, you know, the council wants to be with this too. Uh, I think it's important that we make progress towards connection. You have to determine what you think is reasonable and what's not.
Okay, so a hundred and fifty is just a historical number that isn't. I, I agree with you. I, I think that the, you know, the norm should be everybody's connected. To the sewer, because we, we're certainly putting a lot of money into our sewer. I don't know, I would maybe propose. You don't know the difference in cost between one fifty and three hundred feet.
I could throw somebody on the spot, but I, I mean, we ran some numbers on a couple, one of them not that long ago, but.
I mean, is three hundred unreasonable?
Well, let's put it this way, there may be a, a connection to that. The city has to, you know, we might have to work with somebody and both of us have to, you know, to make that connection. And that's why, you know, you pick a number, you hopefully can come together and make it work. It, you know, some places it has to run right in front, right there. That's what's considered reasonable. She said that two fifty?
Two fifty or three hundred? I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm just throwing numbers out because I don't know what cost we're at.
So what do you think, seventy? Seventy-five hundred for? For that many, for, for three hundred feet? Two hundred fifty?
For the additional one hundred feet.
Okay, additional one hundred feet, so you'd be looking at fifteen thousand, additional hundred feet. So double it, you're going to be over. Fifteen thousand more. That's just kind of going off of what they have for rough pipe numbers at this point. There is that. Heart, you know, there is that clause. For hardship, you know, that you could.
Any other questions for her? Do we have a motion to approve ordinance four sixty-five?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All right. A second item I have is, uh, just an update on the pool operations. Um, you approved the updated seasonal, uh, wage rate schedule. So we will start advertising for those positions. Um, I have a meeting tomorrow with the, um, pool manager, um, our returning pool manager. Um, we are, you know, looking at increasing the lesson rates, fees again. Um, kind of correlating with the wage increase that we need to, to make to attract or I guess hire people. Probably a lot of the similar lesson offerings. Um. I would, I wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be thinking we're going to see any changes in pool operating hours. I think a lot of the same things. It's mostly what we're most concerned about is making sure we get enough staff and that we can, um, keep it open this summer. Um, but, you know, we're working through those items. Mark and I met with the manager a couple of weeks ago and, um. You know, hiring, we're working just on some operational things such as like cash handling and, um, a safe down there. Uh, we're looking at the potential if we can add a little bit more on concessions, um, but keeping in mind some of those limitations, but. Um, as far as getting the pool up and running, we don't have any major construction projects this year, so that, um, opening date is, what are we looking at, June?
It's Wednesday, June eighth.
Eighth.
Order paint today?
We can't, um, open that pool. The school's in session till the Thursday of the week prior, so we can't open that pool till the following week, just because of the late school, um, calendar this year. Um, Mark ordered paints, so they'll be, you know, painting as soon as the weather permits. It'll all start coming together fairly quickly. Uh, any questions? You know, we're, we are looking at possibly adding another pool attendant position if needed, if we're short on lifeguards. Somebody that could handle like the cash register, do some cleaning, the lesson registrations, but not guard, um, just so we can keep our guards doing that, those activities. Um, and we're also looking at the schedule on what we need to have staffed at a certain time. You know, sometimes we can only staff two out at a time versus three when it's busier and so forth. Any questions on the pool?
Is there a minimum amount of employees we need to run the pool?
Yeah, I think we need three, right?
Three per day or three for the season?
Well, per shift, if they get over twenty-five kids swimming, they have to put another guard out. So that's when we have to call in, um, a fourth person.
Okay, so the question is if we don't have enough staff, are we going to even reopen the pool?
Oh, that's, that's a possibility, or limit hours, whatever we need to do. Um, the.
Because. You can post it for whatever you want to pay people and no one's wanting to work. And that's just where I'm going to leave it at that, where we need to look at. A month from now, if we don't have anyone applying. We're not going to put the money into the pool to start it up if we're not even going to have people to work it.
Yeah, and we, we should have a handle. We usually set a deadline at the end of the month. It's usually about a three-week open period, so we should know more by the end of the month on where we're at. We also work closely with the school. A lot of the guards that work at the school come and work for us and vice versa. Um, so sometimes we're able to recruit, um, some people there through community ed. Um, we try to work together on those items, but we'll probably know more in a few weeks. On where we sit, and if that's the case, we'll have to come and have that discussion. I mean, Mark doesn't usually do much for opening until May.
Yeah, the, hands on, we're going to probably pull the pump this week. We're having a little flow issue last year. So, stuff like that will still happen, but, uh, you won't see any work down there till. Second week of May.
So we can provide you another update on where we're at at the next meeting. Otherwise, recruit people if you have anybody, send them my way. Any other questions on that? Okay, audit field work is next week. Um, they're going to do it mostly virtual, they'll, they'll just be in one day. Um, if you do receive a request for information. Um, if you have any trouble with that, let me know, I can connect you with the auditors, but it is normal that you guys receive a questionnaire. Um, so if you do get one, don't be surprised by it. Answer the questions honestly and as quickly as you can. Um, you're also welcome to pop in if you'd like, if you have any, um, items you wish to discuss with the auditors. Um, or I can get you their contact information as well. It's the same, um, slender winner that we've had, the same lead for a couple of years now. Um, and then the last item I wanted to bring up is the downtown stakeholders meeting. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting, we invited, uh, all the downtown business owners. Um, and I think, uh, Councilmember Swanson actually attended to, um, on behalf of the Legion, and we had a really good discussion on, um, what. Business owners need from our downtown, or what, you know, what, what we can do to help or assist our business owners. Um, and we're working with the Benton Economic Partnership on coming up with an email list and, uh, looking at possibly developing a program. Um, like to improve facades, um, help them with, you know, building, maintenance and those type of items. Uh, so probably we'll have some more discussions in the coming months. Um, maybe even a request coming to the council as, you know, is there a program that we can help with a, a small grant? Um, the, we also worked with the BEP and applied for, uh, some D downtown revitalization funding. Uh, so we're hoping that maybe one of these funding sources or something could start a program. It seems the need is, uh, the downtown business owners need some help with their buildings. Just the cost to update, maintain the buildings. Um, and so we're really trying to look at what we can do to help down our down, uh, help our downtown business community. Went very well. I thought we had a great turnout. Um, and, you know, more to come on that, so we'll kind of keep you up to date. Anything else for me?
Any questions for her? Okay, we'll move on to old business update on the Highway twenty-three project.
All right, um. Yeah. Good evening again. Um, so the Chunky twenty-three project, uh, was, the letting data that was Friday, March twenty-fifth. Um, there were four bidders. Um, the apparent low bidder is Michael's Road and Stone. Uh, at eighteen million, one hundred and fifty-seven, or one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars and fifty cents. Um, that is roughly a million dollars over the total project, um, engineering estimate. Uh, that is, give, roughly six point four percent over, uh, which. Is reasonable in this market, I guess. Um, with that being said, there. There is a lot of information that isn't public knowledge yet. Um, and that, including that is the bid tabs. So we do not have access to as far as what the total city cost is at this time. With a one million dollar increase in the project, who's to say, I guess, that, uh, with this market right now, that a majority of that wouldn't be. Tor on the city utility items. Um, so tonight, I guess we are just looking for your direction on, um. Allowing us as a, as a sta- at a staff level to work with MINDOT, um, and coordinate any potential changes to the project to. Uh, maybe reduce costs for the city. Um, and, you know, the, I believe it's going to be. The project should be awarded in the next few weeks. Um, there is a roughly, uh. I don't know, other two, three weeks after that to actually approve that award, um, through MINDOT. So we were thinking that, um, potentially. At, what's the, is it the nineteen?
April.
April?
Twelve, maybe.
The potential second council meeting this month, that we can come forward with, uh, more of a total city cost. The potential second council meeting this month, that we can come forward with, uh, more of a total city cost on this project and, and further discuss the city options as far as potential project changes on that. There are definitely items, um, on this project that need to be a part of this project due to the, the road reconstruction. Uh, there are also items that, um, are, uh, in there as a, yeah, future growth. Um, I'll just put it that way, so they don't necessarily need to happen with this project. But I guess with that, we are just looking for the direction to make those, to do that, work with MINDOT and potentially work through those changes with them at a staff level.
Definitely.
I would like to see that done, get, get, uh, some more meetings with the engineers, whatever, and two weeks we can have another meeting and, and finalize everything.
I think we anticipate everything to be open and, I mean, awarded within a couple of weeks.
That's the way it sounded, that if we, we should have better numbers by the nineteenth. They were also, didn't have a set timeline to that either, so we'll, as I said, we'll hopefully have better numbers by the nineteenth.
Yeah, and any of those items, if there are any changes, that we would, those would have to be approved at this level. So we would bring something back to you once we have more information for consideration. So, we just need direction and make sure that you understand we might, you know, we're gonna be further looking into this.
Proceed, move forward.
So are we saying we're having a meeting in two weeks?
I'll keep you posted, but it's very likely.
Okay.
What's the timeline in, uh, awarding the contract?
Um, like I said, it's, it's, uh, the apparent low bidder is Michael's. The, the award should be in the next couple of weeks. And then the approval of that award should be end of, end of April, early May. I know the construction start date is, is May ninth, so it needs to happen before then. But we also need to have a, uh, if there is potential project changes, we need to have, we need to have those obviously determined before construction starts.
Sooner than later.
Yeah.
So is it gonna be passable, twenty-three for most of the summer, or is it gonna be detour the whole time? Or do you even know?
Detour the whole time.
There is gonna be a bypass in the north ditch, that, so though, there should be traffic, there should be a lot of traffic from, there's different stages, I guess, they're from, you know, Broadway to Eighth, and then Eighth to kind of Thirteenth, as far as the town goes. And there is a, on the north ditch, from Eighth to Thirteenth, there'll be, the traffic should be able to go in that direction.
But that'll be local traffic only?
Local traffic only, yep. All, all non-local traffic will be detoured around the city. There will be, I guess, to answer your question, there will be stretches that will be closed during staging of this project, but for the most part, they should be at least.
Passable.
Passable, in and out, yes.
Okay.
That's all we need at this time, unless you have questions.
Okay. We'll now move on to new business. And if I could get, we're going to have a joint session with the planning commission on that parking and storage ordinance. We'd like if you guys could maybe move up to the front, because we'd like to kinda just keep this between our discussion between the county, or between the council and the planning commission. If anybody doesn't want to, out there doesn't want to stay, they don't have to, but it's just kind of a discussion between us.
Welcome to the hot seat.
The, the main thing we have to decide, are we or aren't we going to, you know, I mean, enforce it? We have, most of the people in town are pretty good about it, you know, but there are some that are not good with it, and as soon as you start trying to come down on them and find them, then all of a sudden they come back with a list of all these other places that are breaking it. And it gets down to, are we gonna just nail everybody, or, I mean, that's the way our, our ordinance says, you know? Yes, no.
We're lucky, we don't have to listen to the complaints after we suggest that, okay?
Well, see.
You're on the right end.
I wanna make this clear. Our main concern with that whole ordinance update is, I don't want the town to look all trashed up. And I'll tell you what, for about four years, I'd drive by a house and I would see two cars, two trailers, half the garbage they haven't hauled out for a year, um, I, I can name a few of the places they've gotten better now. But one of them is the old gas station by Brenney's down there, the other one is right on twenty-three. We just thought that the only way we'd be able to correct that is to limit the amount that they can park. Most people, when they go out and buy a motor home or a trailer, the last thing on their mind is where they're gonna put it. They need it, they want it, and they can afford it, okay? So once they got it hooked onto the truck, now what do they do with it? Park it out on the lawn, okay? That's what we wanted to prevent. We wanted this ordinance to, to make people think about, once they purchase whatever they're gonna purchase and park on the lawn, where they're gonna store it. And I think we've generated enough discussion in the community now that people are gonna be a little bit more aware of what they buy and where they're gonna store it. Lots of storage places, we're just building one outside of town that's gonna have outdoor storage. I know that it's, I know that this ordinance has been, well, troublesome to you, you people, but I, you know, the thing that, that, that I want you to understand is that we thought this was the best way to correct the neatness of the city. And if somebody's got a better idea, I'm willing to listen, but your example of, when you go after the ones that are really bad and then the other people are being pointed out, if those other people were as bad as what the one is that's being fined, I, I, I don't think there'd be a problem. The problem is, is that their junk isn't as much as the other person's junk, but the other person doesn't realize or doesn't wanna realize maybe that the accumulation and how much junk is out there is a big deal. I, I don't know what else we can do. We, we thought about this a lot, I don't know how many meetings, more than, more than we probably should've spent time on.
Yeah, we, we spent too much time on this already.
Bottom line for me, if we're gonna make an ordinance, you enforce the ordinance, period. That's why we have an ordinance. And I hate to say it, I read the whole paper. And I'm one of those people that's got a few complaints, like blocking mailboxes and driveways on Broadway North. If they can ticket that, it should be ticketed. If I can't get my mail because the rehab people are parking right in front of mailboxes, I'm gonna be peeved, okay? That's my point though, that's why we have an ordinance. We looked at problems and we wanna take care of them. And we've got the means to do that. And we don't need to necessarily go out and start hunting them down. But when you get a complaint, somebody better write up a citation if it's a legitimate complaint. And it doesn't matter if it's a big, bad case, or the guy's neighbor has a teeny tiny problem. When I first moved in, my neighbor got upset because he got a ticket for cutting his weeds down. They were bigger than ten inches long or something. And I said, "Too bad, so sad." You know, that's, that's why we do this.
Most people that have the stuff outside their houses, to me, it doesn't seem like they, they really care about what it looks like.
There are some that way, yep.
And I'm tired of looking at the stuff. And I, and I, it, I, I've got a lot of friends from other communities, and one of the standing jokes is how dirty is Foley this week, kind of a thing, and I, it irritates me, you know, it really does. I realize that some people are probably, you know, probably a little more, uh, um, anyway, go on, I, you know, it just, you know, it's gonna affect everybody differently. And if you got a big mess, those are the people that are probably gonna complain about the people with the little messes.
Yeah, they do.
To tell you the truth, I'm really not concerned about them, the little messes, you know, 'cause they usually aren't there for long. Those people usually take care and will kind of clean up.
Well, I, I'm on the planning commission and also on city council here. And I would say that when Katie was issuing the citations, that we had something like ninety-four percent compliance. So what did we have, two people that didn't comply? I mean, people are complying with this parking stuff. And I know that, you talk about the looks of the town, and I think that's important, but I also think it's a public safety issue. When you drive down the street and you can't see any doors of the houses, that's where children and older people come out and cross the street. And nobody, you know, if you're gonna go visit your neighbor across the street, you're not gonna walk to the corner and go on the curb. You have to have some vision there. Um, and if kids are going, you know, if you can't see children because there's all this stuff, it's not safe. But I, I think, I like the, I mean, we did work on this ordinance, and I think it's a good ordinance. I think in terms of enforcement, um, if, you, you have to figure what you're gonna do. This isn't murder, this isn't, you know, some of our, a felony thing here. But if, if people's, sometimes what I see is people say, "Well, this, you know, the police didn't cite this person and they cited that person." But really, in a big city, they just, if you complain, they'll go look. But if nobody complains, they don't scour the city looking to see who's parking where every day. But if you could, you know, in our neighborhood, we had people just storing their boats on the street. And if we could just call, you know, the boat is on the street, stored all summer long unless they're fishing. If we could call the police and they would respond to a complaint, that's how that should be enforced. It shouldn't be the police, you know, with binoculars looking in people's backyards to see if something's not right. But if a complaint is ma- you know, if you don't like it, call the police department, they'll go out and see if the ordinance is being broken. And, you know, a lot of people have spent some money to comply with this ordinance, so I hate to drop it. When there's only, I, I don't know, Katie, if you say how many people didn't comply, but I remember ninety-some percent of the people that you sent letters to or went out to had complied.
Correct, yep, well, the letters I sent to, um, a lot of the people complied, there was just a handful that fought back. And that's when we brought it to the council, because the council directed me to enforce it, I did.
Yeah.
We both complained back, and then it came back to the council. And that's where the council have to, I mean, tell me what you want.
Yeah.
I'll do what you guys want, if they want me to be out there enforcing it, then you have, I mean, people are gonna come back and complain that, and then you just, there has to be some, I mean, you don't need to get a citation for this, but there has to be something that...
Yeah, but I think we have a few people that haven't complied, and it's really like four. And everybody else has spent a lot of money, you know, people have put in pads to store stuff and, to back out on it now, I don't know how you tell these people who've spent hundreds of dollars to comply.
If we, Katie drives by and she sees the pile of branches, they'll pile up, and she sees whatever that's a violation. We don't automatically just cite them and give them a two hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Yeah. You get a warning.
We give them a, a warning and you've got thirty days or whatever. I don't think we can get any fairer than that.
And then if they call me and need more time, I usually, if I see progress, I extend them.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think we have an issue. As far as, we've got the ordinance, we've got a way we handle it, so handle it that way.
Yeah.
It was the interpretation of the ordinance is where the people were not complying with it. So we tweaked the ordinance to accommodate RVs, ice castle, trailers and stuff like that. I think we did a really good job of it. All we're asking is if you own something like that, it's gonna be in its own separate designated spot that you have to keep clean. With that in mind, I think we, you have to enforce it, you have to enforce the ordinance. We spent a lot of time on that ordinance, and I think we made it pretty clear.
Sir?
One of the items was, um, the interpretation, our attorney interpreted, you know, this is what it was, we clarified it with that, this is what it was. There were some individuals that did not agree with the interpretation, so there was some pushback that way. I don't read it that way, I read it this way, we got legal advice. I don't, if they just didn't agree, period.
How many didn't, did, did, did you get like ten disagreements, did you have twenty people come into the community?
Yeah, it was like two, I think. But that, that was something, we, we talked about that one, there was some interpretation questions, but I, I don't know that we're gonna change these people's minds anyway.
Right, right. So I, I believe we enforce it.
But I don't think, I don't think the complaints are broad, you know, broad through the community. I think we've had a lot of people spend money and do what we've asked. And so I, I don't see changing it because they in good faith made these improvements. And so for two, if two people don't like it, we say, "Oh, well, never mind." Well, the people that have put in concrete pads and put in tar pads and, you know, I, I don't, I think we're doing a disservice to them.
People are just gonna have to realize that they can't park everything they own on their property.
Yeah.
It just, you're gonna have to come to that realization. And if they want, if it's important enough for them to keep that recreational vehicle or whatever the problem might be, that they don't wanna pay the thirty to fifty to a hundred dollars a month to have outdoor storage, then they may be considered, you know, maybe they should sell it.
Mark?
Cam, you can't say that you don't wanna park in the yard, we are letting RVs park in the backyard. The ordinance says you can, we're letting them, change it, I don't give RVs in the backyard. Change the ordinance, move on. But you have to, what you have here, you have to enforce, that is the problem you guys have. You can park a tractor in your side yard, you can't park a utility trailer in your side yard. What's a little utility trailer gonna hurt your grass? That gravel looks terrible in people's side yard, as long as it's mowed. That's the problem you have, you guys are looking way over this whole thing, trying to say there's no issues, we have problems. You have fully pissed off.
We have a lot of people.
It's a disaster.
Do we get a lot of complaints called into the city as far as parking?
We don't wanna call it, but we hear them, no. Let them park an RV in the backyard on grass, you, you don't enforce that now, right?
It's right now, it's not alongside and it's not in the front.
Change the ordinance then. Who cares about, I don't care, you're saying you don't want them in the yard, that's irrelevant, you guys decide that. Just change this, it's doing what they're enforcing. Then, then people can't come back and say, you know, this.
I feel sorry for these guys that had to park in their yard this winter because they have no other, no other place to park. They gotta reconstruct their whole lawn, it's all tortoise shit.
I think you do a few tweaks, you could have, you know, take the gravel thing out of the backyard, that's...
We need the ordinance, and, and I, we have a good ordinance.
Has to be mowed grass in the backyard, so many of the campers are on hard surface in the backyard. You know, either you gotta say none and they're all gone, or you keep it mowed.
Well, our idea was to allow people to have something there, you know? We didn't wanna just say, "There'll be nothing parked outside," okay? We're trying to be fair about this, so we allowed trailers. I don't remember anything about having an RV in the backyard, uh, you know? The thing that, that the city and the council has to remember is that, you know, there's, you know, maybe ten people that are looking at that RV beside the guy that owns it in his backyard. Most backyards, they've got a neighbor that's looking into it. Personally, I wouldn't wanna look at that for a year on end, on end, on end. The idea was just to clean it up. If, if it's a matter of, of a, of a, of a trailer or a single RV, that's not the problem. It's these multi- It's these multi, they've got more than one item and they're just, they're lining them up? That was the way I had understood it. And that's why we allowed some of the things. If someone wants to interpret this thing, there's a person right there that they should talk to, to say, you know, are we allowed to have this or not? You know, because she knows the ordinance.
Yes.
She knows the ins and outs, now whether or not there's an RV packed in the backyard and we're not supposed to have them and they're allowing them, I don't really think about that. Um, I personally, I just wouldn't wanna look at one of those things, um, in my backyard. And, and I'm not, okay, let me, let me rephrase that, if someone has one parked in their backyard and I'm the neighbor across the street from them that looks at that all day long, I don't think I'd like to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to look at my garden, my flowers, my little shit that has a lawnmower in it, not a motorhome. Also, like the motorhome is gonna be heavier than a, your standard utility trailer. And they're gonna be rotting up their backyard, they're rotten up coming and going every time they go out there to use it. So I think there was some consideration that that was one of the reasons why we're allowing utility trailers, but not allowing the recreational vehicle.
Cause when you say a utility trailer, that's one you could literally pick up and move by hand if you had to.
Right.
Right?
So it really, I don't know that there's that much in here, to be perfectly honest, that is beyond the means of anybody to, uh, to comply with. I mean, like you said, we changed the surface, so you're no longer pouring hard concrete or, you know, pouring concrete or using asphalt to crush granite.
Actually, I'd rather see a porous, uh, type set of it to let the water drain through it, cause you put tar and, 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 and concrete out there, if you don't have it going on your neighbors, where's it go, on our street? And that water sitting on the street does more damage than I think people driving on it.
And as I understand it, most of this ordinance is delayed during the winter season. So people can't park in their front yards in the wintertime, you know?
We can't remember where the yard is.
Well, let's, let's not spread that around.
But at least it gets it off at the street.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I'll take like East of me, you know where I am, the last, second man I saw is on the left, got a big fifth wheel camper. Parks it in his driveway legally, the worst looking thing, I don't care what happened, I don't, if anyone, whatever. You can't, it's out to the street, he owns an extra lot next to his house, why can't, if you're gonna let that, let him put it on his side yard in the grass, keep it mowed. I mean.
He can.
I know.
The ordinance does allow him to do it.
No, he has to have a hard surface.
Has to be a hard surface.
He has to have a hard surface there.
Obviously that person, they marked that down.
Or then he could put down crushed rock.
Yeah.
The barrier and all that.
So why doesn't he do that, why can't we require him to do that? I mean, not.
You're not gaining anything by that. It looks terrible.
It looks terrible where it is now and it's not gonna look any better just parked next door than I can see, I mean, you know. This is a prime example of what I was talking about, they buy it, they have no idea where they're gonna put it.
I know, they don't think about that.
They, you know, the people gotta understand that they have something like that, they, you know, they're gonna have to rent a spot at this outdoor storage place that's being built in Foley right now.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of them out there, there's a lot of places to store it, um, just not here for a yard.
Yes, yes.
I don't think this should be allowed back there either, like.
Well, one of the things I was looking at was maybe putting a couple of notices in the paper, letting people know that come like this first of June, we are gonna start enforcing the ordinance. So you do have time to, you know, figure out where you're gonna park it, how you're gonna park it, so that it will follow the ordinance that we have made. And then come June, we'll just start enforcing. You know, make, give.
But I, I have a bigger problem with the trash and all the other debris that's in front of these places. I can sometimes handle, not a camper, but a trailer, whatever, but some of the garbage is at their front door, clean out to the street, that sucks. And it's on that side, it's on this side, no matter where you're driving, it's bad, you see it.
I just have a question, you said that come, okay, that's fine, if you want the ordinance, of course, tell me, direct me of what you want. That's all I'm asking, is what you want enforced.
No, we should tell her also, not to interrupt, is what, where were the RVs? Do you want to enforce them, no part of the?
Right.
I'll call gravel, or are you gonna be gravel, or you wanna change it to grass or whatever?
I mean, I'll enforce what you guys are, but you have to be clear of what you want me to enforce. And then when come June, when it's being enforced and say John Doe is refusing, I come to you, what are you going to do? Cause it comes to the council to determine the, what the next step is, which would be a legal process. It's not a citation, it's a formal legal process.
You have to legally cite it, it's not a ticketable.
Well, if, if a citizen in the city doesn't follow an ordinance, what do they normally do, not just with parking or storage, what do they, what do they do?
Hire the attorney to prosecute.
Same thing.
But you know what happens is you, there's a couple of people that don't comply, but word gets out, so-and-so went to court, he had to pay the two hundred and fifty dollars and, you know, word gets out that you, that you enforce your ordinance. And then other people say, well, I don't wanna go to court, I'm gonna do it, you know, if I already got, gonna have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars, I might as well get the gravel in there. So I think that, um, there's attorney fees, there's, you know, there's an expense there, but if you don't enforce your ordinances, you're kinda screwed as a city.
Okay, cause the reason I ask is, I'm the one who looks like the bad guy.
I know.
Not you guys, I am, so that's why I just wanna be clear that you have the backing of it when it comes to that point.
Well, I don't think you're a bad guy because you give people a lot of opportunity to comply. So we have some people that refuse, but are we talking about two people, are two people gonna throw out our ordinance? Because we don't wanna pay the attorney, I don't know.
And you can suggest to them, they can always come to the coun- council meeting.
I do.
Voice their opinion.
I do, yeah, I do.
You know?
And none of them ever do.
They don't.
Well, why are we even talking about this, you know? I, it, it just irritates me that people can complain, but when it comes right down to, to action or doing something that's gonna make it better or suggesting a, a viable change, you're nowhere to be seen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, that opinion is zero.
Well, I do think that we have to have the understanding, it's not, the police are not gonna go looking in backyards with binoculars to see who's complying. If you have a complaint about somebody on the street, um, you know, parking their truck in the front yard or whatever it is, you call the police, they will investigate and do it, that's the system, it's not the police running out looking at every yard to see who's complying or not.
I'm sure that's how people felt about it originally, I thought that's, I think that's probably what they thought we were doing.
Well, I think initially we were, we did have Katie go out.
You directed me to be proactive.
We did direct her to go out because it was such a widespread problem. But now, when something new happens, you should be able to call the police department, it's not urgent, but, you know, they drive, I, I see their gas bill, they drive around the city all the time, they will go out and they will start the process, say, this is in violation. You have, what, thirty days to resolve it or how, however you're doing it, it's working pretty well. And if they in the end do not go with the cooperative setup that Katie already has, I think we need to enforce it in court. And I, I think it'll be one or two cases, maybe one a year, maybe not. But I think the ordinance, I, I personally would like a, a stricter ordinance. I think this is very lenient, but I understand in Foley, the custom is you got a lot of toys that get parked and I, so I don't like things stored in the driveway, I think they, but this is what planning commission agreed to and I think, to me, it's the minimum and you're not really asking a whole lot of people.
We're allowing some things to be stored, you know?
Yeah, and that, that's kind of just, you know, this is a hunting and camping and fishing community and it's different than if you live in an urban area where people don't have quite so many things. So I, I, I think the ordinance is the minimum and I think it should be enforced. And I really don't think that one or two people should stop us from having an ordinance to keep our town nice. Cause we're, you know, you think there's a lot of complaints, but I think people get used to it. I mean, I stored a pontoon in an empty barn and I don't know, it was three hundred dollars a year or something. It's not that much.
People comply, they just grumble along the way, you know, they're not happy about it, but there are a number of people that still comply.
I worked with a guy in the military and he said, as long as they're complying, complying, let them complain. As long as they're doing what you ask, don't get mad that they complain about, just let them complain.
Mark?
If I wanna, voice as a resident, you want me to go over there?
Okay.
Where do you want, can I sit here?
Well, you can sit there.
You know who I am?
Yeah.
You know all that, I think you're grabbing the backyard for the campers is a stupid idea, I keep hearing no resident has complained. I'm telling you, that's a stupid idea.
I, I agree with you and the only reason we did that is cause I think people weren't trimming the grass around what was staying there.
That's the whole, grass ordinance, we're talking parking tonight, that's a grass violation, we already have that in ordinance. So now at least you have one resident that spoke up and says, get rid of it, it's stupid, if you're gonna let the campers park or the trailer park in the backyard.
Now, what do you do about?
You guys decide about the RVs in the backyard, that's a whole other.
And I think we allow them, right?
On a hard surface, as we.
On a, on a, on a hard surface. On the gravel, whatever, they didn't interact.
Yeah, but we didn't enforce it.
We had a moratorium till we met with, till this meeting, so.
There's a lot of people affected by that one.
Mm-hmm.
That what?
I will tell you, there are a lot of people affected by that backyard one. So whatever you decide, we need clear direction, whatever it is.
Well, I think the ordinance says you can park an RV in the backyard, right?
Trailer, right?
There ha- there are some in the backyard, we have.
Right, it was to, what council said, the ones in the backyard, leave them, is what you said.
So then we should change the ordinance.
What I've been thinking with that year.
I guess I've got no, no problem with that, but.
Hard surface front yard?
It's a tough decision in a small town.
I, I wasn't.
Big boys toys.
Parking anything in the backyard is just not very clear, cause I kinda figured this was gonna happen, but.
Yeah.
And you're right, it does look crappy back there, you know, I'd like to see grass, but if they're gonna wanna park something back there and we don't know if they're gonna keep it trimmed up.
Even those that park beside the garage, some of them don't keep it trimmed up, yeah, I.
We'll put a couple of notices in the paper, Katie, and we'll wait till June and then we'll just wait for complaints. If nobody complains, we won't do anything.
So let's everything going that's going on now until somebody complains.
Yep.
Last one for the record, you guys are saying you have an ordinance, but you're not gonna enforce the ordinance.
No, we just said we are gonna enforce the ordinance.
Well, well, excuse me, he just said, we're going to leave it as is, which says you can't do it, but yet we're gonna say you can't do it.
He's just saying it's complaint driven, it's gonna be complaint.
Yeah, yes, yes.
It's gonna be complaint driven, we're gonna enforce it if it's complained about.
There's complaints filed, it has to be enforced.
Well, then what do we do after that?
We're right back here.
Right, Mark, I do understand your point, okay?
It's frustrating.
The thing about having an RV or something in the back, okay, the reason why we came up with that ordinance is, okay, people are gonna have their stuff, okay, they're gonna have their RVs. Well, I have it, we, we made it so they have a designated spot with inch and a half substrate down where they can park their RV or they can park their big fish house back there and it can actually look like it belongs there instead of sitting out in the middle of the yard or on the side of the yard or whatever. I mean, a lot of times, you know as well as I do, that you drive around and the, the grass is high, okay, well, sometimes it gets mowed, sometimes it doesn't. At least it doesn't look as bad as when that gravel is sitting there because it's a definite boundary of where this RV sits. That was the whole spirit of it.
That's why we came.
But nobody's doing that, most of them are on grass.
Well, then, you know.
Most of them are on grass.
You just said, you just said you don't want that enforced.
What?
You think change the ordinance.
He said, get rid of the gravel then.
Gravel in the backyard, they don't need it.
I don't think we should have the damn RVs in the backyard.
That's a whole other topic there.
Because I, there's, there's, there's people, you know, like, let's take like Lane Estates or whatever, they're just you're gonna have an RV that's right outside your back window and you don't know.
I got one.
Putting on one? Yeah, Mark, this, none of this stuff bothers me at all.
I just wanna be fair to everybody. If this is what the ordinance says, this is what we do, none of this, well, we aren't gonna let this be how we plan, huh? We're playing to the first.
No, what?
It shuts everything down.
Right, I understand.
Mark, what we're saying is that we're not gonna send Katie out inspecting people's yards year round. If, if somebody calls and, you know, there were times that it stopped, but there were people living in RVs in the backyard with cords running.
Totally different topic.
That's, that's different.
Yeah, but I mean, you, when I see that, I should call the police and they should go investigate it. Same thing, if there's an RV in the backyard, if, if it doesn't bother anybody and nobody makes a complaint, then the city, the police department isn't gonna run out and do it, but if it bothers you, and I think it bothers people on, you know, I live in the older part of town where there's smaller lots and people would, you know, I count, I think six is too many cars and junk all around for those tiny lots, they're fifty feet. But, um, if nobody's complaining, we're not going to investigate independently. But if somebody complains, you know, there's an RV there and it looks horrible and kids are climbing all over it or whatever the problem is, then the police will, you know, there's a complaint and they'll act on the complaint. That's a way, that's, it's driven by complaints is all it is, it's enforced when there's a complaint. Or if somebody parks it, you know, right on the property line, it's supposed to be five feet in, that could be a problem.
But that's not fair across the board, I'm sorry. Either enforce it or don't enforce it, you can't say complaint driven. Because if I don't like him and he's got a trailer in his yard, I'm gonna call and complain. I'm sorry, that does not work, it's no gray area, it's black or white.
Well, I'm of a different opinion because I think that the police, you know, I, I don't want the police investigating everybody's backyard all year, I think that's kinda weird. But if there, if there's an ordinance and they say, hey, he's not complying and he lives next door and
But then I get the long list of several houses who are in violation because that individual's mad that he's getting singled out, then I get the pages of lists that I have to follow up on, cause then they're officially complained.
And then we're right back to where we are tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Do you wanna write up the ordinance, Mark?
Got it. We can do some work on the planning commission.
It'll take about three words.
I just, tell me what you want and be clear, that's where, all the thing I'm asking.
You wanna a town nice and neat without junk laying around, that's what I want.
Yeah.
And I thought this was moving in that direction the correct way. If some people don't like it and you gotta baby them around or you gotta wait for a complaint, I don't care what it takes, I just want our community looking nice. Not having to worry about somebody's garage door and there's stuff blowing outside or things stacked around the outside of the door that's been there for three or four months because they've been too lazy to
Or years, or years.
Or urge to take some action, that's all we're trying to do with this ordinance. We're not trying to pick on anybody, but you, those people have to realize that if they buy something, they better figure out where they're gonna put it. they better figure out where they're gonna put it, not next to the neighbors. You know, that's, that neighbor might not like looking at that. You know, they have rights too. Just like the guy that wants to park his camper in his backyard. Personally, I don't think we should allow that, but the other board members talked and we voted on it and it went and now there's things in the backyard. But if they're gonna put them in that backyard, it's gonna stay neat. And if it takes having gravel down to keep it neat, then that's the only way we thought we could possibly convince them to not park it in the backyard, cause they didn't wanna put it on. Now they're gonna take them over and, and rent a spot where they should be storing that unit.
Now, there's a situation out there. The vehicle's parked on concrete, it's under his deck, behind his house. I would not wanna live next door and look at that car sitting under that guy's deck.
I agree totally.
You know, stuff like that shouldn't happen.
And that, that affects their property values. If they decide they wanna sell and they got somebody next door with all this crap laying on, what do you think that's gonna mean? So they, you gotta understand their rights, not just the person that wants to park something in his yard's rights.
I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying you have to go this way or this way. You can't have this, you can, you can, you can, you can. You know?
But if you drive through the alleys, it's altogether different. They got stuff tucked under into the trees and whatever, you don't see that driving by. But you go down an alley and you see that, and that still affects other neighbors. And stuff like that's a, this is really a tough, tough thing to, uh, I like the complaint thing, but is it right? I don't know.
They'll last till June first and they'll really have, someone will give you a list of fifty and we're right back here, June.
As far as the other stuff we have in ordinance, as far as trash, grass, weeds and whatever, so that could be, that should be enforced all the time.
I guess you got to say, do you want RVs in the backyard or not?
Well, I think we allow, we allow them in the, in the ordinance.
As long as they got a pad.
So, you know.
Okay, have their pad, so that's, what's the answer?
If it's important enough to have to put a backyard, you know, let's put a pad down.
In the backyard with a pad, that's it.
I, you know, personally, I don't want them in the backyard, but we have a statute, they're allowed with a pad.
Okay, personally is one thing, what is the city council telling us to do? That's what we need to know.
Well, I think we passed the ordinance and I'm in favor of leaving the ordinance as is.
And enforcing.
And enforcing it.
But you come to the big campers and the boats, they're, they're out of place. A trailer's not so bad. So now you can let a guy with a trailer there, you can't guide with a camper or boat. What the hell you do?
Well, you know.
That's why you guys are related, we're just, the only thing I.
I know, I like, I think we have to have an ordinance. I'm not arguing that. The ordinance is great, it's a full ordinance. But like you say, everybody, uh, interprets a different way.
I think, I think part of the problem might be when we, when we define trailer, are they saying, well, you know, it's a motorhome trailer or a, you know, some other.
Everything could be a trailer.
I, I know that.
Yeah.
And, and that might be what we might have to define.
Yeah.
Is, is what's actually allowed back there, not leaving room for interpretation.
Exactly.
We could probably take a look at that.
We did that too, and we got definitions of it, because you have an RV, but you also have an ice castle that doubles as a utility vehicle, trailer, because you can, you open up the back and you drive in and you close it up, and those are getting really big. So, we, we said, if you're gonna have all this, okay, you're gonna put it in your backyard, you're gonna put it on a pad. I thought we made it pretty easy.
Katie?
With that pad, we run into an issue though. The, per the ordinance, it has to be bear, in a, you know, the, whatever, the.
Barrier.
Barrier on the sides and it has to have the.
Fabric.
Fabric, thank you, I couldn't find the word, underneath. Okay, I cannot legally go onto that property to inspect that, to make sure it meets those standards. I have no legal right to. So how would I enforce that?
If there's weeds growing through that block, you can darn sure bet they didn't put fabric down.
That's after the fact though. Then what are you gonna do? Cause we have, uh, some issues in town too, where they put the crushed granite in front of their house and made like a little angle to the side parking, which according to the ordinance, that's against the ordinance. But, and they don't wanna tear up all that, that they put down.
Well, I really don't wanna have to have the city permit them to put a pad in. I mean, that seems kinda ludicrous. These were suggestions that we made so that, you know, they put rocks down and they don't put fabric underneath. In a year, it's gonna look just like a lawn. Even worse, because now when they gotta try to trim it, they're gonna have rocks all over the place. So, like I say, we could maybe look at some interpretations of, of, of what type of vehicles we consider trailers and not allow anything else. Suggestion, I don't know, you know, as everybody else will. I like the idea that ninety people in this community have cleaned their shit up, excuse the French.
Yeah.
But I'm glad that ninety of them did and there's only two or five that are complaining about cleaning up their stuff.
Well, it's percent, so I don't know if it was even ninety.
Percent, no, of a handful.
Yeah, I, somebody said it before when we were doing this, that there was something like ninety-four percent compliance after complaint letters were sent out by the place.
I think that wrong the letters, there was. I mean, but that's, this is a continuous thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that was just that one wrong the letter.
I'll write something up.
Okay.
Something to make it easy for us, Mark.
Well.
These guys did a good job. I like the ordinance, we needed an ordinance. How the hell do you enforce it? You know, it's either all or nothing, because they, they don't all get the same, they don't get, all get the same look at. They're all different. And that's the problem. You're gonna do one, you do them all. I don't care if they have a badge, don't have a badge or whatever, if they're onto the compliance, they get it too, you know?
I agree.
And, and that's what's happened. We're picking out some various and, you know, you can drive around, drive around.
But there are even better than the ordinance too, that you can get minor exceptions to it.
Yeah.
Than the ordinance too. So then you have minor exceptions, but somebody's unhappy about that minor exception. And it just cannot keep in it.
Well, how different is this ordinance from say the ordinance in Becker or in Riley or other communities?
Well, we provided all the samples, I just can't remember, that was non-canimal.
So they can't be, it can't be a whole heck of a.
There's not a lot of difference.
Just get off the beaten path in St. Cloud. You think Foley's bad? We don't hold a candle to them. Yeah.
That's, cause they go in and enforce?
That's, I think that's easier to enforce.
The clear answer is simply this, so we don't sit here all night.
Yeah.
Mark's gonna write us up a little thing.
Okay, but I, I wanna say.
We, no.
All right.
We will hold off on enforcing this ordinance yet. We'll get Mark's, we'll see what he comes up with. We won't enforce anything yet and then we will go over this thing again.
But, but I think, I mean, staff driven or you watch this, I mean, I watch Mark do it.
No, I think staff driven is what I'm, in my mind, it.
I vote Mark.
And you, I'm, I'm the one enforcing it, so it needs to be staff driven.
Staff, it is.
Okay.
Okay, well, I have a comment.
I'll offer my suggestions, Mr. Bear, and then, you know, like we do in the house, send it and say, what do you think? And then that's all tweak it and then bring some back and.
And then maybe we can get together and.
I don't think we need to change the world.
Tweak it one way and tweak it the other, so it'll work for us the best way. Cause we can argue this all night as for what's a trailer, what's not a trailer, what looks good, what doesn't look good, I mean.
I think generally speaking, I think the majority of the community members, staff and council is on the same page as far as that we don't want a billion vehicles parked all over the place. But we have to provide some, some options. I think we can come up with a couple of things to clarify based on the complaints that we're hearing and dealing with.
Well, I would like to make a comment. I, thank you for volunteering, Mark, but we have a planning commission. And I think that's where the work should be. If Mark wants to join the Planning Commission, I think that's great.
This is just something, this is just something to help us out. This is just something to help us out.
Well, I think.
We'll take ideas from anyone, I guess, if it's one is a good idea.
We're open ideas.
Appreciate the work you guys do.
They got some ideas they'll come up with, they'll give them to us and then we can go over.
Then cycle through.
Yeah.
It's not like this is an unusual thing. Staff brings recommendations all the time.
Yep.
Well, we have a planning commission that put a lot of work into this ordinance.
They did.
And I think city council should recognize that this is, was not taken lightly, there was a lot of time in it. I, you know, it was not everything I was in favor, but there was a consensus that this is what should be done. Now, Mark has an idea, I, all these people have ideas. Great, come join the Planning Commission and let's get a consensus.
We're gonna get some ideas. There's nothing wrong with giving us ideas. Then we can go over and we can see what happens.
So, will, will we make this a joint planning commission meeting then? So we're not gonna waste any time on it?
That's the thing, I don't wanna send it to you guys and you guys say, nah, this ain't gonna work. I think we should do exactly what we're doing now.
Exactly, I agree, I agree.
And we're done.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't want it sent back to where it's going.
Cause I'm tired of it.
We've done a lot of the work.
Well, I, I just.
I don't think, there's a lot of this that's still okay.
Yeah.
Most of it.
There's still a lot of it that's okay.
They just, we're just gonna see about tweaking a few things and we'll go from there.
I'll be honest, it's gravel, no gravel, RV or no RV and backyard, no backyard.
Just come up with a few things, we'll have another meeting and we'll go to the planning commission meeting and sit there and discuss it out.
Sounds good.
Be done with it.
Maybe a size limit too, you know?
Well, just the planning commission and the council.
The, the trailer thing you're talking about, right?
The size that you could put back there.
There was some law against, you know, the only one I've heard is bumper hitched goofneck hitch, I mean, people park their goofneck trailer in the side yard. It kicked that or something.
Right.
For your utility.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, and there's some, some of the definitions that I was looking for, because you're supposed to define different, like, there's that two vehicles one that you define your, and what you're gonna use and ask some guys to do, so, so maybe you could look at a few of them.
Yes.
Okay.
I keep getting my property taxes and my evaluation is going up considerably again, so I guess I'd be for some trailers in the backyard to lower my property tax value, because it's fifty thousand in the next two years, it's going up from la- from twenty to twenty-two or whatever nineteen. I got the new one, I got the proposed and
Well.
I would like a little bit of break on that, so if a few people wanna park their trailers in the backyard to lower it, I'd be all for that, but it isn't affecting my bottom line right now, it's making it worse.
Okay, well, the staff, when you guys get something put together, just let us know and then we'll figure out where we're gonna go from there. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's, what do you do? It's, it's.